It is now 5:05 and I call to order the meeting at the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council sitting is the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the Victorville Housing Trust. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Kennedy, Councilmember McEckern.
Here.
Councilmember Negretti.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Cox.
Here.
Mayor Garcia.
Here. This is the time for public comments and I don't see anyone in the audience that would like to address the council. Therefore, I call for our city attorney to give us a declaration of closed session items.
Thank you Mayor Garcia. We only have two items this evening. They are both existing litigation pursuant to government code 5495-6.9D1. It is the SEC versus City of Victorville and Airport Authority. Case number set forth on the agenda. Item A is for the Airport Authority, item B for the City Council. To the extent there is reportable action, we will report it at the conclusion of the closed session or the commencement of the six o'clock regular session.
Thank you. At this time, we will recess to our regular closed session and we welcome being a regular meeting at 6:00 P.M. Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the Victorville Housing Trust. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Kennedy.
Here.
Councilmember McEckern.
Here.
Councilmember Negretti.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Cox.
Here.
Mayor Garcia.
Here. At this time, may we have closed session announcements by our city attorney, please?
Thank you Mayor Garcia. We had two items for closed session this evening. Both were existing litigation pursuant to government code 5495-6.9D1. It was the SEC versus City of Victorville. One was for the Airport Authority, item B was for the City Council, and there was no reportable action with respect to those items.
Thank you. At this time, we will have the invocation which will be delivered by Pastor Dan Davis, First Christian Church, and then following the pledge of allegiance will be led by Police Chief Sam Lucia. Dan.
Want to share a couple of quick verses from one of the most depressing books in the Bible, the Book of Lamentations, and there's always a glimmer of hope. He says, "I well remember my troubles; my soul is downcast within me, yet this I call to mind, and therefore I have hope." Because of the Lord's great love, we are not consumed; for his compassions never fail, they are new every morning. Great is your faithfulness! I say to myself, 'The Lord is my portion; therefore I will wait for him.' Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we do thank you for your faithfulness, even when it feels at times that things are crashing down around us, even when it seems hopeless. We call to mind that there is always hope when you are involved. And Laura, I think you've demonstrated that in the last few years as you've guided our City Council and our different leaders here at the city, oh God, and our staff and employees here in the City of Victorville. You've brought us out of some dark and dismal times, and I thank you that you're setting our feet on more solid ground. Pray that you'd be with our council as they make decisions tonight. We pray for unity, we pray for strength, we pray for wisdom, and we ask, oh God, that we as a city would just continue to move in positive directions and in all things, that we would bring honor and glory to you, our faithful God, and it's in your name that we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a presentation this evening. This presentation of January 2016 fire activities video, and Victorville Rotary Club's O'Keefe Public Safety Award recipient, Fire Chief Dan Mancy will do the presentation.
Thank you first for your kind words during the state of the city. I really appreciated you recognizing your fire department. You've all had the conversation about body cams in law enforcement. The fire service has something very similar. It's called a helmet cam. Interesting enough, I get to travel around the state teaching classes or attending classes. Believe it or not, the City of Victorville is often brought up and spoken about in a training perspective of the fires that our guys are running. A very talented division up here. I truly think that the City of Victorville has the best firefighters on earth. This month, they've created a video of some of their incidents, and they wanted me to show that to you and demonstrate what they do on a daily basis.
And the City of Victorville started off 2016 at an aggressive pace. Over 2,000 emergency responses were handled, including numerous structure fires, traffic collisions, extrication assignments, and medical aids. Additionally, fire crews participated in station-level and multi-company training, drilling on the latest suppression techniques and standards, many of which were immediately tested during this month's responses. The following clips are from just a few of the responses this month in your city.
(Inaudible) On scene, we're assuming Jasmine IC. All units, level one stage, switch attack upon arrival. Just an updated condition, there is a medium pressure smoke, altitude upgrade, continue the balance.
(Inaudible) 312 on scene, single story, single family. Heavy smoke from the attic, working attic fire. 312, immediate attack mode, we do have a hardener, go to the deck.
(Inaudible) single wide, office-type construction trailer. Be well involved, fire in the interior. I'll be assuming well on my feet.
(Inaudible) fire, single vehicle into a pole.
(Inaudible) 312 on scene, one vehicle on the pole, it is well involved, patient doesn't appear to be out.
(Inaudible) 312, we have one immediate, like crest, one ALS airship to Victor Valley.
(Inaudible) Red Three's on the scene of a single story, multifamily complex, abandoned, well involved with fire. Red Three, be assuming California IC.
Currently, there is two, I'm going to say three to four units involved. So I need to go second on this, David's connected, multiple units, large in size.
Okay, I'll go second alarm, your objective is to hold it to the unit involved.
(Inaudible) 312 on scene, one vehicle on its roof, major damage. Appears we have one trapped. Be assuming Amergo's IC.
(Inaudible) 311, oh yes, 311, wire tender four. With next about 319, Medicogen T22 and Red Three already en route. Report now, structure fire, Boston, New Alabamay, 17182, North Nevada Avenue, 17182, South Nevada, South Carolina Avenue, BBC 195. Tactics on, one fire round three, secondary tactics on fire mark.
(Inaudible) advise, smoke showing, start a second.
Copy, smoke showing, start a second alarm, we have multiple reports.
Motel with exterior stairwell. We have one unit in the center, fully involved. It looks like we have fire in the attic as well. We'll be working on it 360, have all units switch attack, we'll be in the attack mode.
Tonight is my distinct pleasure to introduce you to one of our very, very best firefighters, Johnny Reese. Johnny, why don't you come right up? Bring Darby with you, if you'd like. No, she's not coming, apparently. I'll have Battalion Chief Porter introduce him.
Good evening, this is Engineer Johnny Reese. Johnny's been stationed at Fire Station 319, which is located at Southern California Logistics Airport. He's been there for a couple of years now, and he's been a firefighter for approximately 15 years.
Johnny's also a veteran of our military, in the Navy, and has been absolutely instrumental in ensuring that the airport meets FAA regulations. He's just done a great job for us. Johnny was recently given the Royal Keefe Rotary Award, and also was honored at a VMI ceremony. I wanted to take the opportunity to introduce him to the council. Thank you for your time.
I do have a presentation of a proclamation. I'll come down and present it. President, please come forward and join me. I am pleased to present the proclamation to the Friends of the Library for your generous support of the Victorville City Library and your recent donation of 31 public computers and seven staff computers. These computers are of great benefit to our library and our patrons. Thank you for these computers and the many contributions you have made over the years to our library. Thank you so very much. We appreciate everything that you have done. Well, thank you very much, and here I present to you this proclamation on behalf of the Victorville City Council, and we are so proud and thankful for all that you do. Thank you so very much. This evening, we do not have any appeal hearings. Can you hear me okay? It sounds like my mic is not working. Can you hear me? So we move on to public hearings. Just a second, let me check. We have item number one, B1, establishing speed zones on certain streets, and I open the public hearing at this time. I do not have any cards at this time. Is there anyone that would like to address the council at this time? If not, I close the public hearing. And do we have any comments from our council members?
This for ordinance number two, 2356.
It's ordinance 2355.
2355, I move section of ordinance 2355.
Mayor Garcia, I do need to read the title of the ordinance.
Yes, read the title, please.
An ordinance of the City of Victorville establishing speed zones upon certain streets in said city and amending section 12.20.020 of the Victorville Municipal Code entitled Decrease of State Law Maximum Speed on Various Streets.
Do we have a motion?
Motion still stands, waiting for a second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. McEckern. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item B2, notice of intent to adopt a notice of exemption for the Bear Valley Road between Amergoza Road and Balsam Road repaving project. And I open the public hearing at this time. I do not have any cards. So at this time, I close the public hearing.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McEckern, second by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Now we have consent counter. Items numbered C1 through C8 can be approved with one motion unless there is an item that needs to be pulled for discussion. Anyone?
I'll move approval of consent counter.
Second. Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. McEckern. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Now we have consent counter. Items numbered C1 through C8 can be approved with one motion unless there is an item that needs to be pulled for discussion. Anyone?
I'll move approval of consent counter.
Second. Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. McEckern. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to written communications. Item D1, application for waste tire enforcement grant program. Madam Clerk, will you please read the recommendation?
The recommendation is that the City Council adopt Resolution Number 16-008, a resolution authorizing the Director of Development to submit an application for a CalRecycle Waste Tire Enforcement Grant and execute all grant-related operations.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item D2, standard lease agreement with Aircraft Recycling Corporation, ARC. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation, please.
The recommendation is that the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority Board of Directors approve entering into a standard lease agreement with ARC for the cut-up pad location.
Just a question, Mr. Metzler, recycle aircraft?
Yes, actually, there is a company out there, a part of their larger business, they do deal with aircraft that have reached the end of their life, and once an aircraft has reached the end of its life, there's a very large percentage of the aircraft that is recyclable.
And reusable?
And reusable. In fact, there's a big secondary parts market for the reuse of parts that can be res serviced and basically put in inventory for airlines or aircraft owners' parts inventory, and that becomes a replaceable kind of component, just like a component into a car. But typically, after all of the valuable components that have been pulled off of a plane and used for the parting out, then basically the final salvage is the hull, which all gets recycled and hauled off for metal value.
They just scrap it, melt it down?
Yeah, scrap it, melt it down. They take it to a salvage yard somewhere. I think the last shipments that I'm aware of would transport from here to Phoenix. For all intensive purpose, what I've heard is that practically everything on an aircraft is recyclable. I did hear as much that what isn't or is difficult to recycle are the overhead storage bins.
And they just do one plane at a time in that hangar?
Yeah, this is on a cut-up pad, literally in the middle of the airfield, in between the two runways, so it's a dedicated concrete pad sitting on five acres with containment dykes to be able to contain any spillage of fuel or what have you. So it's all done away from the primary operations of the airport.
Thank you.
Make a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McEckern, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item D3, standard lease agreement for Building 744 by in-between the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, SCLA, and Leading Edge Aviation Services, Inc., Leading Edge. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation?
Recommendation is that the SCLA Board of Directors approve the lease agreement by in-between SCLA and Leading Edge for Building 744, and approve an additional revenue appropriation in the amount of $19,320.
Move approval. Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item D4, I do have a card. Betty...
Well, just before we get into that, Doug, are we still hearing this? You want to make a comment?
It's really the council's option. Over the weekend, the president designated three national monuments, which I'm assuming are the same boundaries as was proposed in the Feinstein bill. Just for information purposes, I did get a call from a member of Senator Feinstein's staff, Kevin Chang, today. He indicated that the senator planned on reintroducing her bill because there was other portions of the bill that are not the monument designation. She would take the monument designation out since it's already been approved by the president. So, but the rest of it, she's still intends on bringing forward. I also saw a newsletter from Congressman Cook's office that indicated he still had plans for his bill to move forward. I don't know, I didn't get into the details of that, but at this point, certainly at least the senator's bill that was studied by the Legislative Review Committee is going to change because it will have the monuments taken out. I think that was the primary concern of the council. I'm not sure there's a reason to continue to discuss it, but that's out of the council's discretion.
Did the president write a check to cover the cost of maintaining this monument?
Uh, no.
Because the Bureau of Land Management and the Park Service, I don't think, have enough money to maintain what they have now.
That was and continues to be a concern I share, especially with this type of designation, but it is within his power, and it has happened.
Well, we should thank the Legislative Review Committee for their efforts on this.
Yeah. I know you have a card, it's not a public hearing, you're not legally obligated to call if you want to just simply not hear the item. It's entirely within the discretion of the council.
You can come up and...
I, you know, I'm not here to... The point, I'll make some quick comments, and then if you have questions. I've been intimately familiar with this, and I think you made very good points about it. Mari Jitavsky from the Wilderness Society, I live in Joshua Tree, and I agree with what was said. Senator Feinstein has asked the president and indeed declared three national monuments. The only correction I'd make is that Mojave Trails National Monument would actually be larger than that was in the legislation. So the maps and all else are available to you online, whitehouse.gov or in the DOI link as well, and I can certainly provide that if you want them afterwards. And yes, because this has occurred under the authority given the president in 1906 Antiquities Act, Senator Feinstein has said she's going to reintroduce California Desert Recreation Conservation Act, sans these monuments. But she wanted to emphasize, I think, in her statement about doing that, that her commitment to the OHV community to introduce this legislation, in particular to create national off-highway recreation areas in existing places, Mirage, Stouder Valley, et cetera, that's part of this legislation and something she intends, as she has said, to do. So she made a point of pointing that out, and I think hopefully that'll please some folks. So I wanted to make sure you heard that. Given that, we'll see what happens with Representative Cook, we'll see what happens with this legislation, you know, neutrality, or if you really must, I suppose, just to wait and see what happens. The last thing I wanted to say was just to answer, anticipate some questions later, maybe tomorrow and maybe next week, but just to give you that and also give you the opportunity to contact me or others about this, which has to do with some statements that Supervisor Lovinggood made specific to Castle Mountains National Monument, the Castle Mountains Mine, contentions that he was worried that this mine would not be able to open, and it's just completely not true. In fact, the...
About 30 seconds.
Okay. The president of Castle Mountains Limited thanked Senator Feinstein and the president. They are fully on board with this, they are. They had arduous negotiations over the past year-plus, and they have no problems and no contentions at all with this mine. So keep in mind, mining is open for business in the desert and will continue to do so, including despite these monuments being established and anything else. Okay? Folks, thank you for your time, and I'm always available for questions.
Thank you very much. Do we make a motion on this, or is that...
Dead issue, I don't know.
We move on to item D5, additional appropriation and award of construction contract to clean cut landscape for desert scape upgrade in the Green Tree Median in the city's open space area, Project ES16-044. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendations there.
The recommendation is that the City Council approve an additional appropriation request in the amount of $10,352 from Fund 220, the gas tax fund, and award a construction contract to clean-cut landscape in the not-to-exceed amount of $43,352 for the desert scape upgrade of the Green Tree Median in the city's open space area for fiscal year 2015-2016. Move for approval. Second. Motion by Mr. McEckern, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Now we have public comments. I don't see anyone that wants to speak, so we... City Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of upcoming events getting into March here. We have the Clean Sweep Weekend, Saturday and Sunday, March 12th and 13th. This is with our recycling program, drop-off center, and Household Hazers Waste Collection Center. It'll include tire amnesty, Tire Amnesty Day. Advise staff not to give me words that are difficult for me to say with my braces, and as well as a free mattress disposal. And then coming up Saturday, March 26th, is our Spring Festival and Easter Egg Hunt at Hook Park. That is always a madhouse. If you have children, I highly recommend that you come. You may notice a slight change, this was something that I asked staff to do, which was, we are calling it an Easter Egg Hunt this year. It does not make it a religious experience. My Bible doesn't have anything about Easter eggs or bunnies, so there are, just like Christmas, there are both a religious as well as a parochial side to this holiday. So it is an Easter Egg Hunt. I didn't know what a spring egg was, so anyway, my little editorialization, sorry. Then Community Cleanup is coming up April 9th. Last time, we set records for the number of volunteers, number of teams, numbers of everything, so we want to break those records again this spring, so get your teams together for that. And then a couple of weeks after that, on April 23rd, is a neighborhood cleanup event as well, that includes a free dump day for residents. So if you have, you know, those large bulky items that you haven't called to get picked up, or you have excess waste, Free Dump Day is coming up April 23rd for Victorville. That's all I've got.
One else?
He did forget one little item. On March 2nd is Read Across America, and I believe many people in the city are volunteering for that, including, I think, our mayor and our city manager.
I have to leave you guys something to talk about.
Anyway, I just wanted to make sure that that was on the calendar, that people knew about that. You can volunteer through the Elementary School District to read to kindergartners and first graders, I believe, or third grader, or is it third grader? I should know this by heart, but...
You should.
They'll assign you a classroom where two or three or four. So, and some of the most grateful children you'll see is when you read to them.
By the way, I did that, I think it was last year, Gloria, didn't we do it last year? It was just a, it was a bunch of fun. I think every council member ought to do it, it's just great fun. Third graders, you just, I haven't had one around in a long time, so, but they're wonderful.
One else? Oh, that's it? Our median is a German.